Let me know, please.
I'm here, Chair.
Very good. Fantastic. Alright, here we go. Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting of the Wayne County Commission to Order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Each member is acknowledging that they are attending the meeting via Zoom and that they are located in Wayne County, Michigan, unless otherwise stated when I call your name. Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Basham has requested an excuse. Commissioner Clark Coman?
Here.
Commissioner Dobbs?
Here.
Commissioner Haddis?
Present from Cleveland, Ohio. Alright.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Colleen?
Here.
Commissioner Kinlock?
Present.
Commissioner Kneecik?
Here.
Commissioner Morecki?
Here.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Present.
Commissioner Varga?
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Badun?
Here.
Vice Chair Palomero?
Here.
Chair Bell?
Here.
You have a corn present.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Invocation.
Okay, right now, we'd like to ask Vice Chair Palomera to introduce our invoker for this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Delivering the invocation this morning is a man of many degrees and pedigrees, a man of many friends and virtues. This longtime Livonia resident and disciplined disciple of God is both a legal legend and a true man of the people, who just as they could have been an old man of the cloth. His heavy and lengthy portfolio of civic and professional accomplishments includes map drawing expertise and is topped off only by his being a very proud father and grandfather. Please welcome the caring life coach and loquacious linguist and lecturer of St. Colette Catholic Church, a gentleman whose middle initial could also stand for compassionate, the esteemed Alan C. Elmcamp.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Once again, the message this morning is the importance of prayer and seeking God's direction and support. As President Franklin Delano Roosevelt said during a time of national challenge, "I would ask that our people devote themselves in a continuance of prayer as we rise to each new day. And again, when each day is spent, let words of prayer be on our lips." From Proverbs, Chapter 2, "For the Lord gives wisdom; from his mouth come knowledge and understanding. He holds success in store for the upright; he is a shield to those whose walk is blameless, for he guards the course of the just and protects the way of his faithful ones." Let us pray. Lord, may we be informed, thoughtful, and faithful in our discourse and deliberations. May we respect our differences and commit to disagree without being disagreeable while seeking what is best. May we seek your wisdom in the discharge of our responsibilities for the common good. We give thanks and praise, Lord, for your continued blessings on our country, state, and county. And finally, we humbly ask that you protect and bless us and our families, friends, and all our people. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Lecter Elmcamp. Here I say, Father Elmcamp, for those words. We appreciate them this morning. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Reading, correcting, and approval of the Journal.
Is there a motion to approve the Journal?
Move for approval.
Support.
Moved and supported in discussion on the Journal. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone wish to abstain?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Report from the Chair.
Thank you. Have a few things today. First, let me remind everyone that's listening that we vet items during our committees. We work in a committee process, and during that time, items are thoroughly discussed and vetted, and they come here to the full board for final disposition. Second, let me thank everyone who participated in last week's Tri-County Summit. The commissions from Macomb, Oakland, and Wayne County worked together to put on an awesome event last Friday at the Enzo Ford House. It was a beautiful location. We had over a hundred people in attendance. We discussed the things that we have in common, which are water, broadband, roads, infrastructure, and it was a dynamic event, especially after having a hiatus for many, many years. And we pledge to do this next year again. So I just want to thank Commissioner Morecki, Commissioner Dobbs, Commissioner Baker McCormick, and Commissioner Anderson for coming out. Special thanks to Tim Johnston, who really worked with the team with Oakland and Macomb County for all the details to pull it off. Cynthia, Lane, and Jim, thank you again so much for your assistance in pulling this off as well. Congressman Andy Levin and Congresswoman Lisa McLean gave opening remarks. We had a video message by the Secretary for Transportation. We had a video remarks from EPA Region I Director. It was just a wonderful event. And the closing remarks were from our very own Senator Gary Peters. So it was a treat if you missed it, but we do have a video. If you'd like to watch it, it is in its entirety. But again, just thank you, and we look forward to doing this again. Enzo Ford House is actually in Macomb County, so next year we'll either have it in Wayne or Oakland County. So thank you, thank you, thank you for a wonderful Tri-County Summit, and we look forward to doing this again, working on how we can work together as a region to move our region forward. Also, I would like to, at this time, have remarks, if I could, by our CFO, Mr. Huey Newson. Last meeting, there were some comments made in concern to funding for our public health, and Mr. Hughie Newson has a very important message about our funding for public health. Huey, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair, and thank you very much to you and to all the commissioners and to all the concerned citizens. I just wanted to clear the, kind of clear the air here in terms of funding from the state of Michigan. We have not been made aware of any disruption with any funding, past, present, or future due to the mask mandate. And based on, you know, we work obviously hand in hand with Treasury and other departments, that other agencies of the state of Michigan that provide us funding via grants. And so I can assure you that no one in, you know, no one in my staff nor myself have been told of any disruptions whatsoever based on this. And so, again, I, you know, I will report to the commission once, if that were to happen. We do not anticipate that Corp Counsel or, you know, Corporation Counsel has looked over all the associated documentation laws, and they also have not raised any concerns as well. So I wanted just to submit that to you, Madam Chair, and to the rest of the commissioners for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. CFO. Just wanted to put that item, the fact that no funding has been or will be disrupted from the state of Michigan to the county of Wayne. Thank you so much, sir.
Not an issue. Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
We're moving to page two of the agenda, unfinished business. There is none listed. We are on offering of petitions, ordinances, resolutions, and presentations. There are none listed. We are moving to reports from committees. Report A is from the Committee on Public Services. There are five items listed on pages two through five of the agenda.
Okay, thank you so much. Public Services is our first committee report. Commissioner Morecki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move approval, items one through six.
Support. Okay, it's been moved and supported in discussion on the items. If you scroll up, please. Any discussion on any of the items on the Public Services report? Okay, three, four, five, and six. Okay, hearing no discussion, we'll do a roll call vote on the item.
Who supported the motion, Madam Chair?
Me, Commissioner Dobbs.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dobbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddis?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen? Commissioner Colleen?
I guess I got unmute to do that. Aye.
Commissioner Kinlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik?
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Badun?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We are on Report B from the Committee on Ways and Means. There are ten items listed on pages five through seven of the agenda.
Commissioner Varga?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I moved the Ways and Means Agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported for the Committee on Ways and Means. Are there any questions, discussions on this report? Okay, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dobbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddis?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kinlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik?
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Badun?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Next item.
We're moving to...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would have, I'm voting for it anyway, as we already did. But the last item, I just wanted to ask a question. If Mr. Newson is still here, how many additional years are we going to be looking at employing this help to put together the budget? Is this the last year that we'll be extending this?
And which item are you speaking of?
Number ten, number ten.
Number ten? Mr. Newson?
Yes, I'm still here. My vision is that this will be the last year. Obviously, we want to give the budget, sorry, to you, through you, Madam Chair, to Commissioner Anderson. I do want to make sure that Mr. Vandergrift, if you all do, you know, approve his, approve his appointment, I do want to make sure he has as much, you know, support as he can get. He's obviously well qualified for the position, but want to give him as much support as he can get as he gets acclimated to his new position. So my vision is another year, you know, in that, for Reiman to be here, maybe less. It depends on how quickly he can, you know, get up to speed, but also make sure he has his staff in place. And that's another important part of the process. So that's my vision.
Okay, thank you.
You're maxed.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
We are on Report C from the Committee on Health and Human Services. There are five items listed on pages seven and eight of the agenda.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move items one through five.
Support.
Moved and supported items one through five. If you can move down the agenda, please. Thank you so much. Item four is an appointment to the Mental Health Board, and as customary, if the person is here, we'd like to hear a word from them. Is Mr. Phillips here?
Yes, I am.
Hello, Mr. Phillips. How are you?
How are you, Commissioner?
Good. If you could introduce yourself, are you presented at the Health and Human Services, what the, your issue came up, item came up at the Health and Human Services Committee, but not everyone's had an opportunity to meet you, so if you could introduce yourself, please, sir.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. My name is William Phillips. Other than doing my college and law school years, I'm a lifetime citizen of Wayne County, currently live in Detroit, currently have a headquartered business that is headquartered in Wayne County and Detroit as well. We've been in business for over nineteen years. We currently provide staffing and recruiting services for municipalities throughout the United States. Over our nineteen years, we've serviced over fifty municipalities throughout the United States, including some in Michigan as well. As it relates to civic activities and other business activities, I currently sit on the board of First Independence Bank. I also sit on the board of Regional Chamber, and I've sat on the board of the DGC and on the board of the Michigan Athletic Board Control. In fact, the then-Governor Inglis was the person that appointed me to that board when I sat on that in the past. And that basically is the board that regulates the boxing and now martial arts and what they call MMA fighting. We had just started having MMA events when I sat on the board then, and now it's much more prevalent. I'm no longer on that board, but I sat on there for quite a while. I am very interested in being on this mental health board. Mental health has become a crisis in the United States. It is particularly a crisis as relates to our criminal justice system and our homelessness and with our vets. I would like to, you know, make sure that we're advocating for more preventive programs and for more early detection and services to those that have mental health issues. In fact, I'm told that, you know, because of some of the rules in Medicaid, that, you know, we have a lot of youth who are early detected with mental health issues, but they're not eligible to receive the mental health support that they need because they're not as ill as they need to be in order to do so, and I want to make sure that we do something about that. And as relates to the criminal justice system, you have, you know, one in four people that are in encounter or been shot or are killed by the police have a mental health issue. And I've heard over and over from some of our local officials that the Wayne County Jail is very much a mental health facility as well. So we have to do things to support people early on so that they're not, it does not elevate to a criminal situation. And I want to be a part of that. And then, of course, we see the rise in homelessness, and we also see the rise in our kids that are being negatively impacted. And how do we address that? And I want to be a part of this board so that I could help in us addressing it properly.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you for joining us today. Discussions on the report. Commissioner Anderson?
You're muted, Commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Phillips being here. I wanted to remind those that may not recall, Mr. Phillips was treasurer of former Mayor Kilpatrick Civic Fund that was scrutinized during his trial. Mr. Phillips approved and defended in court the use of this fund by the ex-mayor as a personal slush fund, paying for extravagant vacations, golfing, and other things. The county executive previously attempted to appoint him to the Great Lakes Water Authority and withdrew his name after concerns from the commission. Mr. Phillips has demonstrated in the past that his judgment is lacking from what a member of this important authority needs, especially with this authority having already experienced leadership issues. In the Health and Human Services Committee, when this was taken up, Mr. Phillips was, I will say, less than candid when I asked about that. He claimed he asked his name be withdrawn due to the time commitment, but the executive at that time stated his name was withdrawn due to concerns of the commission. The commission is surely aware that there are those in the legislature that are still intent on privatizing this authority, which has been pushed for a number of years. It is more important than ever that we are careful who is appointed to this authority's governing board that doesn't raise additional questions in the legislature. We should reject this appointment and give Mr. Evans an opportunity to submit the name of another person that is free of this questionable past for commission to consider. We can do better than this point, this name that was submitted, Mr. Phillips, that we are dependent, that are dependent on sound decisions by the authority, and it's, there are individuals that are very dependent on those sound decisions by the authority, and it's bored, and they deserve better. Therefore, I make a motion to reject this appointment.
There's a motion.
On the border, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kinlock?
The point of order is, a motion was made, this came out of...
Yes.
Yeah, approved. A motion was made. There is a motion on the floor. Does our rules allow for a subsequent motion while there's a motion on the floor to...
Thank you. I got you. Council?
Through the chairs, my understanding, the current motion is to approve this item and other items. So the motion to reject is not appropriate at this time. You have to dispose of the motion to approve at the moment.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on the Health and Human Services report?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Anderson?
I will then just use that as my statement, reason I will be voting no.
So noted. Commissioner Haddis? You're on mute, Commissioner.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Has the candidate been convicted of any crime or any felony during his involvement in different administration or job or representation?
Mr. Phillips, can you answer that question?
No, I have not.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Haddis?
Thank you. That answered my question.
Thank you so much. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Candrevis, you have your hand up. I want to know if it remains to this conversation, although you're not a commissioner. Can we help you?
Well, I do want permission to speak if I can just about to Mr. Phillips, but, you know, it's, yeah.
I'll call you after commissioners, okay? Thank you. Commissioner Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also discussing item number four on the agenda. As I have discussed many times over the years, the threat in Lansing to remove the $3 billion in Medicaid dollars that come to Michigan to support mental health in this state through a public system. And that has been under assault now for a good seven years. And we, and I've been discussing this with my colleagues all that time. Earlier this year, we had the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of Community Mental Health Boards come to the Special Committee on Behavioral Health to discuss what was going on in Lansing with the latest effort to get these bills through. My overriding concern is that we do not wind up with a privatized mental health service. Other states have tried this. The net result of this is that more money, to the tune of $300 million, gets pulled out of the system and goes to the bottom line of the health plans. Other states have seen a diminution in services with this change. So I am absolutely here. I'm very concerned that this is the wrong time to move this appointment forward. I am not making any judgments on Mr. Phillips at all. This is politics. Many of you have been in Lansing. You know the deal. And I would hate like heck for the folks that want to privatize this thing to use stories as a cudgel to diminish the services to our citizens for mental health. So I will be voting no today. There's plenty of time to get the appointment in and get the board filled. But my concern is that I don't want to do anything that would give the legislature up in Lansing a reason to privatize the health system, the mental health system, which won't be good for people that receive mental health services. So I'll be voting no today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kinlock?
Yes, Madam Chair. This gentleman currently serves on First Independence Board. He has served on there since 2007. He's a member of the Board of Directors for Detroit Regional Chamber of Commerce, past member of the DGC Board, as well as he was appointed to the State's Athletic Board. He served in a number of roles, governing roles. He has not, at least I haven't heard anyone in this meeting say that he was removed from any of these positions because of misfeasance or malfeasance. I understand the concerns that have been raised, but those concerns were addressed, and he has continued to serve in a, in a, in a manner that has not caused any issues since that, since that time. The legislation and discussions that are taking place in Lansing, we have a very competent staff and team of folks over there at D-Win, who is working very closely, closely with the Republican-controlled legislature as well as with the governor to make sure that we do not, do not privatize mental health and the pub, and disregard the public's interest in regards to the legislation that is, is, is currently taking place in Lansing. I find, I've heard nothing to, in this meeting, to demonstrate that since that time that Mr. Phillips has demonstrated himself to not be competent to carry out the duties and responsibilities of this office. And I ask for the members of this board to take that into consideration. His service on those various boards, since the, since the stated times of concerns, and I am quite sure that he would represent the community well on this board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am concerned about the privatization of the Mental Health Board, and I just wanted to know if Mr. Phillips had a position on that already?
I think that my position is that we have to make sure that the board as a whole does his job and make sure that we're physically responsible and that we approve and support programs that are going to help the citizens in southeastern Michigan. I think that by doing that, we will be able to ward off any privatization issues from the state. I think it's a little ambitious to think that one person's appointment is going to tip the scale as relates to the legislature's making a decision to privatize or not. I think that if the, the, the authority is mishandling money, if we're, do not have the right programs, and we're not serving citizens in southeastern Michigan, that will have a greater impact than the appointment of one board member.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Candrevis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, you know, I think Commissioner Kinlock struck many of my, struck many of my notes, but I did just want to reiterate that this board, there are six individuals that serve through, that are approved by the, this commission to serve on the board. Most recently, we had Michelle Jawad in 2020 and Commissioner Kinlock in 2021. The same issues on privatization were still around back then. I don't recall anybody getting grilled about that or that coming up. I think it's a valid line of questioning, but I just want to keep everybody to the same set of standards on this. Secondly, I did want to just mention that the CEO has full confidence in Mr. Phillips to handle the assignment that's put before him, be on this board. He's an esteemed lawyer. He's an esteemed lawyer and a reputable businessman. There's no reason to think that he will not serve the residents of Wayne County in a very high manner on this board. And thirdly, I, I do want to point out that at the HHS Committee, he did answer, and he answered truthfully about, you know, some other position that might have been put out there previously. Um, and just necessarily to read something on some other statement on that, I think is unfair to Mr. Phillips to assume that he wasn't being truthful because there might have been some other statement by other sources uh, at that time. So I would just like to ask for this board's support to make Mr. Phillips uh, it's the, fill the one vacancy that we currently have on this D-Win Board and let the D-Win Board, under its new leadership, get to the uh, very important job that it has.
Thank you, Mr. Candrevis. Any further discussion on the Health and Human Services Committee Report? Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
No.
No on the report?
No on that item. Item four.
Duly noted, Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dog.
Yes, on items one, two, three, and five, no on four.
Duly noted, Commissioner Haddis. Commissioner Haddis.
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen.
I on the report and a no on item four in the report.
Duly noted, Commissioner Kenlock. Commissioner Kneecik.
I'd like to abstain on items C1 and C2.
Duly noted, Commissioner Morecki.
Um, yes, but a no on item four.
Duly noted, Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Varga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Baydun.
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Yes.
Chair Bell.
Yes.
Motion carries, and I have as no on item number four, Commissioners Colleen, Anderson, Dog, and Morecki, and I have Commissioner Kneecik abstaining on items one and two.
Okay, thank you, congratulations, Mr. Phillips, uh, your business of experience and your law degree and all your experiences will certainly be an asset to the mental health board, congratulations. Look forward to your service.
Thank you, Board for um, Commission for approving me, I look forward to serving. Have a good day, everyone.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Yeah, on report D from the Committee on Public Safety Judiciary and Homeland Security, there are five items listed on pages eight and nine of the agenda.
Commissioner, uh, let me have um, our clerk comment. Her whole name, her whole name, her clerk comment.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I move approval of items one, two, what else do we, okay, one, two, three, four, and five.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Items one through five on the public safety report, any discussion on the report? Any discussion on the report? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dog.
Yes.
Commissioner Haddis.
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen.
I.
Commissioner Kenlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik.
I'd like to abstain on items three, four, and five, please.
Duly noted, Commissioner Morecki.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Varga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Baydun.
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Yes.
Chair Bell.
Yes.
Motion carries, and I have Commissioner Kneecik abstaining on three, four, and five.
Thank you so much, next item, please.
We are moving to page ten of the agenda, report E from the Committee on Government Operations. There are seven items listed on pages ten and eleven of the agenda.
Commissioner Dog.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to move items one through seven for approval.
Okay, one through seven on the government operations report. Is there, supported by Commissioner Hades, any discussion on the committee report of government operations, any discussion on the items? Any discussion? Just scroll down, please. One, one through seven, okay, hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dog.
Yes.
Commissioner Haddis.
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen.
I.
Commissioner Kenlock. Commissioner Kneecik.
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Varga.
Yes.
Com- Vice Chair Pro Tim Baydun.
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Yes.
Chair Bell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, next item, please.
We are on page twelve of the agenda upcoming committee meetings.
Please note the meetings upcoming for next week. If there are any changes, please let the clerk know.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to bring attention to the fact that the Criminal Justice Committee uh, will be a complex committee, I should say, uh, will be meeting today uh, at noon, normal time.
Thank you, please, members of that committee, please. Next item.
We are moving to new business, there are two items listed on the agenda and three on the addenda. Item number one is requesting commission approval of modification number two to a collective bargaining agreement between the Charter County of Wayne and the Government Administrators Association.
Move approval, Anderson.
Oh, we have a lot of people moving and approving, that's very good. I was first. I was first. All right, Commissioner Clark Coleman, very good, we got you. Um, any discussion on this item from administration? Anyone from administration wish to give a thumbnail summary of this item?
Madam Chair, I'm sure there is, hold on one second.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Joe Martinico, the Labor Relations Director, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning. Um, this memorandum of agreement was negotiated with the Government Administrators Association. Um, and it is in recognition of um, the need for retention of employees in the juvenile detention facility, uh, the commission recently approved and, and a letter of agreement which addressed salary disparities among the um, Jade, you know, juvenile detention specialists, and these employees were addressed in this memorandum are their supervisors. Uh, so we want, we believe that this also needed to be addressed, and so we've um, submitted this agreement for your approval.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Commissioner Colleen, question?
Madam Chair, I was just wondering if anybody from the uh, Government Administrations, uh, so the GAA was here that can discuss this, uh, and I'm curious as to the vote on approval.
Um, I don't know if anyone's here from GAA, if they are, you can speak that they approved this uh, by vote of their members. That's why it's before us today to uh, put a final vote to it.
I was asking about what the vote might have been.
The vote was, um, anyone here from GAA?
Since they're not here, Madam Chair, I'm going to assume that they just love this, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, let's uh, any questions on this item, if not, we'll go to item number two, we can vote on them together, any item, any questions on this item? Okay, we'll go to item number two.
Item number two is requesting commission approval of de- delegated authority for the county executive to enter into agreements not to exceed twenty-eight million, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and one cent in previously authorized emergency rental assistance program funds received by the county pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, and who from the administration is here to speak on this?
Wafa Denaro, I'm Director of Economic Development, so I presented on the terms now to, to commission, and this is really just formalizing, um, allowing us to spend the money. This, the money will be, still be spent um, um, according to treasury guidelines. We are going, we're asking for delegated authority to get into agreements with the municipalities and utility companies to be able to pay them directly, but every single payment will be tied to an individual who has to be qualified um, and meet all of the federal requirements.
Thank you, questions, Commissioner Colleen?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And, and it's not only us in this county, but these funds have been a long time coming to get out to uh, citizens. Have we expended any of these funds yet? And uh, how, okay, and then how long, Ms. Denaro, um, is the window going to be open for citizens to apply for this, because we got to get the word out right away.
Yeah, two great questions, so we have not expended any money yet. Once we get the delegated authority today, um, we're ready to make payments um, to a couple hundred, a hu- couple hundred people. We're just kind of waiting for the official formal um, authority to be able to pay out individuals.
And let me stop you there, Wafa, and that's why it's on our agenda today, we want to make sure that we got it approved as soon as possible because they have applications already. And now this allows those payments to be made to those um, applications, I'm sorry, Wafa, go ahead.
No, it's okay, and then the second part of your question um, was how long will the application be open? It'll be open um, and until we run out of money or until um, September of two thousand and twenty-five, when we are required to spend down the money. So um, it'll be, it'll be one or the other, we're, we're hoping that we can spend this money a little bit faster um, and get the money where, where it's needed, um, and we don't want to, um, you know, we, we don't want the, we don't want to hold on to the money longer than we have to.
Well, that sounds good to me, and uh, Madam Chair, I was aware that some people had um, had uh, applied for this already, hence, hence my question, have we distributed any of these dollars yet before we did this? So thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Denaro.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kenlock.
Uh, yes, to Wafa, how often will you be reporting on uh, how the money is being uh, spent? Uh, and uh, will you give us a breakout as relates to how it's being spent within the respective communities? Is there any built-in um, expected timelines that you will be reporting out?
Yeah, so we're required to report to treasury quarterly, um, and we can share those reports with the commission as well. Um, we are not, rec- treasury doesn't require us to report by community, but we absolutely can break it out by community and include that in our report to commission. And really, anything else, any other um, numbers you guys want, we can report out quarterly to uh, come, come to the commission and report that out.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, as part of, of this, this motion, I would like it include a requirement to report uh, to commission outside, uh, out, and outside of the requirement from treasury.
Madam Chair, this is Felicia, may I address that point?
Go ahead, you're probably going to say what I was going to say, go ahead, counsel.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead.
I'm so the, so the resolution that delegates authority to the CEO does include a reporting requirement to the commission, it's a report quarterly, the first report is due March first.
Thank you.
Thank you, you counsel. Any further questions, Commissioner Kenlock?
Oh, that's it, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Dog.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Wafa, there is a um, a question or a point in our committee analysis that says um, the cover letter indicates delegated authorities being requested for the department to enter into agreements. Please clarify the following, what, who are the participating county communities the department may enter into intergovernmental agreements with? And then it lists um, that the opportunity has been extended to all forty-two communities, but Detroit's running their own program. And then there's a couple of communities that have opted in at this time. What exactly does that mean? Do, does that mean that only um, people in those communities that are doing the intergovernmental agreements?
No, it means, no, it means that only um, the communities that have opted in will get paid directly for the water bills. Um, anybody, any community who has not opted in, the individuals who get approved to have their water bills paid, they will get that money directly, and they will have to pay um, they will have to pay their community, they'll have to pay their utilities down, as opposed to the other communities where we will um, ACH the funds to them directly.
Got it, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, will these funds be uh, passed out through um, through Wayne Metro?
They will not, we are um, we are running the program um, internally, we have brought on Guide House to help us administer the program, but we are doing it all internally.
So none of the funds will be uh, shared with Wayne Metro?
Correct.
Okay, uh, second mission. Okay, Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, is there a one-page communication that we can share with uh, the community?
Yeah, absolutely, I, I can send that flyer out to um, to commission staff and they can share it with you guys. And, and everything, everything is on our website at WayneCounty.com backslash rental assistance. We have flyers, we have all the information, all the applications, everything is, is on um, the one, the, the webpage.
Okay, and this will begin what, what date officially again?
So, so the application opened up um, at the end of September, and the applications have been ongoing, we've been processing the applications. So you know, making sure that they qualify, asking for additional information if needed. But we haven't paid anybody out, we're waiting to get the delegated authority to send out payments. So it, it's already, the programs are already.
Ongoing, it's ongoing.
Yes.
And um, the flyer and information, um, is that, uh, is there a direct link on the county website? Like, if you open up the county website, can we just direct our constituents to go there and they'll see it right away? How do you get to it? Because sometimes it's very difficult finding things on the site.
Yep, it is, and it's WayneCounty.com backslash rental assistance. So we tried to make it as easy as possible, um, so it's WayneCounty.com rental assistance.
Okay, can you put it in the chat?
Absolutely.
Well, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, Wafa, is that backslash or forward slash?
Backslash.
Oh, okay, uh, that's rare.
Or, I don't know, I'm putting it in the chat so you can see, it's.
Okay.
Backslash. Uh, the one. Slash, forward slash.
Forward slash.
Forward slash.
Yeah, because that, that would make a difference, people trying to get into it. Uh, but I, I did want to mention or ask you a question too, uh, regarding how the money is dispersed and uh, that we are sure that it's going to the purpose that it's uh, intended to pay utilities and that, how are we monitoring that? And are we monitoring that landlords, if they get the payment, are not just, uh, you know, maybe they're uh, going to walk away from the property and leave the, the tenant holding, uh, holding the bag, uh, and, or maybe uh, even be forced to move.
So we are, so landlords that are getting paid out are signing an attestation that they will not evict the, the, the people. We're also, we're talking to um, the eviction courts to make sure that that they're not, i- if they have an application with us, we're still working out the, the details on how we will coordinate, but we're working with the courts that if somebody has an application with us, that they cannot be evicted. Even if their application is still being processed, that they cannot be evicted, um, as long as they've applied with us.
Okay, that's, that's good to hear, I mean, I, I've seen uh, other reports in other places that uh, this has happened and that people uh, thought they were. Thought they were getting assistance and the landlord takes the money and, and, and the individual, the renter is. In a, in a bind then. But thank you. Thanks. I appreciate whatever you're doing, trying to make sure that's taken care of. Thank you.
Commissioner Badum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got a question and a comment. The question is, Wafa, this does not apply to residents in the city of Detroit, right? Because they have their own program?
That's correct. Yep. The city of Detroit receives their own allocation and they're running their own program. We have linked the city's application on our website as well. So we ask if you're, you know, a city, if you live in the city of Detroit, here's the link to, to go and to apply.
Well, another, maybe a suggestion, recommendation, since you're gonna be sending out a flyer, is it possible to get this translated into Spanish and Arabic?
We already have it. We'll send that to you guys as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, is it the tenants or, or is it the landlords that have to apply for this?
So it could, the tenants absolutely have to apply. The landlords can apply as well if they want to get the money directly. So the, the tenants and the landlords can both apply. The landlords cannot apply without the tenants.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clark Coleman, you're hitting this up still. You have a question?
No, I thought I put it down.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Another question for you.
Um, Wafa, let me just, a question. As you said, the landlord can apply both, but the landlord has to apply with the tenant. My question for you, is there any? Part of the certification process prior to payment that the property owner is able to. Or is required to state that the property isn't up for foreclosure or, or any potential of being sold within a certain period?
We're also, we're checking it in our tax rolls as well. We're doing, that's a part of our due diligence. We're checking to make sure that the landlord actually. Actually owns it. So we are, we're doing our, our part to, to.
So that's part of.
It's part of our process. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any further questions from commissioners on this item? This is gonna be so very important to landlords and tenants going forward. So I'm so glad that we're rolling this out. And I'm hopeful that everyone would apply who is in need of these funds and services. Any additional questions on item number two? Okay, let's, motion for item number one and two.
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported. We'll do a roll call vote on items one and two.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, too reluctantly, but I believe it's necessary to give the delegated authority on, in this case. Thank you.
Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Daw?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kenlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik?
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Protim Badum?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next items, please.
You want to go to item three on the addenda?
Yes, please.
Item number three is a resolution by Commission, Commission Chair Bell to reappoint Kathy McKino Lipsitz to the Joint Airport Zoning Board.
Move approval.
Support.
Okay, is it possible if we could take three and four together? Number, could you read number four, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Item number four is a resolution by Commission Chair Bell to appoint Shirley W. Tolliver to the Joint Airport Zoning Board of Wayne and Washtenaw Counties.
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay, so for number one is the reappointments to the board. For number four, it's, number three is a reappointment, number four is a new appointment. Any discussion on items three and four?
Need support for four.
There's support for four, I think. Took them together, right?
Yeah, we're together, three and four together. Do you have the notations for this? Okay, thank you. Any discussion on three and four? Commissioner Hattis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have the honor to serve for last more than four years in that zoning, air zoning port. And it's a very good. Board because they deal with the cellular towers, the height within the twenty mile from the airport. And I want to wish the new member good luck, and she will enjoy dealing with many professionals who really know the business and wish. Kathy McKino, McKino would like a reappointment. It's a very good board. I was honored to serve you on it and. Thank you for the last four years I served on.
Thank you, Commissioner Hattis. Vice Chair Palomera, could you take over for one minute, please?
Yes. Any other comments or questions on items three and four?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair.
Go right ahead, Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Thank you. I too wanted to congratulate Kathy on her reappointment. And also to Shirley Tolliver on her new appointment. And I don't know if they are on the line, but I was wondering if they wanted to say anything. I don't know.
Are either Kathy or Shirley on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line. I'm having trouble hearing, but I hope you can hear me. I just want to thank all the commissioners on my appointment.
Congratulations.
Looking with you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. McKino couldn't make it. She had a mediation this morning. Okay, very good. Okay, very good. We have items three and four have been moved and supported. Roll call vote on those two items, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Daw?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kenlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik?
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Protim Badum?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much and congratulations to our new appointees to the zoning board of the Wayne County, Washtenaw Counties Airport. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number five is requesting commission approval of a collective bargaining agreement between the Charter County of Wayne and the Michigan Building and Construction Trades Council.
Move approval.
Support.
Okay, everyone moved and supported that one. Is there someone from the administration to discuss this, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Joe Martinico again. This agreement would be a successor agreement to the agreement that expired on September thirtieth. And it is a three-year agreement. And it through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty four, and it provides for wage adjustments and increases to. Premium payments that are provided in the agreement. And it is the result of collective bargaining with the Michigan Building Trades and Construction Council. I believe there may be a representative from the council on the call as well.
Is there a representative on the council?
Here is Madam Chair. This is Pat Nelson, Secretary Treasurer of the Michigan Building Trades Council. Just want to say that the hardworking men and women of the trades division of Wayne County overwhelmingly accepted, approved this agreement. And I want to commend Mr. Martinico, very professional. Set of bargaining sessions and had it done. And thank you, Joe, and thank you to the commission.
Hey, Pat. Thank you, Pat.
Hey, Pat.
How you doing?
Any additional questions on item number five?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Pat for being there, being here. I wish all the members that represent or the organizations, unions that represent. Would, would do the same, you know, just to let us know that all the members are in favor. Sometimes it's questionable for us, you know, when we're. Just seeing it come through in paper, but I appreciate him being here himself.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Pat. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
All right. And, and to that point, I'll just say, once it's approved by the members, the majority of the members, just when it comes to us, if they don't approve it.
Right, they don't.
You know, it, it doesn't come here. So I'm always confident that. They're okay with it because they voted for it and then it comes here for final disposition. All right, we have item number five, roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Daw?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kenlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik?
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Protim Badum?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes, yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you so much. Next item, Madam Clerk.
We are returning to the agenda, page thirteen, testimonial resolutions and certificates of appreciation. There are six items listed.
Yes, their motion. So move. Support. Moved and supported for the testimonial resolutions and certificates. Any discussion on these items? Hearing now, we'll do a voice vote on the favor. Say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye for the aisle. If you oppose? Anyone? We're still saying? All right.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
We are on memoriam. There are twelve names listed on pages thirteen, fourteen of the agenda.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to the items in memoriam? Commissioner Morecki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'd like to first speak about Jim Allen. He was the, he passed away on November third at the age of eighty-four. He was the retired fire chief who worked for Northville City Fire Department for fifty years. Serving as the chief for thirty-six of those fifty years. And I also wanted to mention Ernie Orchard. Who is from Orchard Hills, which we use here at the county. Was a very influential in civil engineering in the industry and highly regarded. And Madam Clerk, I am asking that you also attach Commissioner. Anderson's name onto that memoriam as well.
Duly noted.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Badum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two weeks ago, a tragic accident that took place in the city of Dearborn. Six-year-old girl was hit by a driver and he took off. She was killed instantly. It was a very moving funeral for this beautiful young girl. And I would like to add Commissioner Kneecik to this memoriam because she lives in Dearborn Heights. The girl, her parents live in Dearborn Heights, and she was visiting. Her parents in Dearborn. And this reminds us of the, the. The requirements that we have or whatever mechanism we have on the books in Wayne County about reckless drivers. And just reminds us that we really need to do something to put an end to this madness throughout Wayne County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to place the name of Ronald Walker. He is one of my church members. And he passed away after a lymphie illness. Which, and I just wanted to say that, that there is a reason that we have myosha and things of that sort. Because he was a, he, he was a dry cleaning worker all his life. And back in the day, in those days, they didn't require you, they didn't have myosha or safety precautions. So you didn't have to wear like mask or they weren't encouraging that sort of thing. So. As a result of, of standing over those pressing machines and, and, and also. Breathing those fumes from all the chemicals, he contracted lung disease. And he suffered with that. So I, it just only brings to our focus the reason that we have safety precautions now. By myosha in the workplace. So it's so necessary. This young, this gentleman did not have to die. Had they had those precautions back in the day when he was working in that, in that field. So. Ronald Walker is his name. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to speak on U.S. Representative Barbara Rose Collins. I just want to thank God for her life and all that she was to all of us that followed her in the leadership and, in, in the political arena. Thanks for all that she did for the city of Detroit when she was on the school board, not the school board, but the city council. So to her family and those, you have my prayers. May God bless you. And Barbara Rose, rest in peace. You did a great job. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kenlock?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to place the name of a, just a wonderful, wonderful soul and. Someone who made Detroit proud, an amazing lawyer turned businesswoman. That is in the passing of Kristia Donaldson. Kristia Donaldson was forty-two years old. She was the youngest child of the late Marie Farrell Donaldson, the former city auditor general for Detroit and ombudsman. As well as Clinton Donaldson, who was the former head of internal affairs. I interned for her mom. Her mom was an amazing, amazing woman. And she was, the, the entire family, Piper and she were just, just always very creative. And just very, very, very kind as young people. And as they rose into adulthood. They became, you know, Piper received her doctorate and Kristia, you know, her law degree. And then she went on to farm. Just to, to, to build a, a black hair product company called Thank God It's Natural. And it's, I mean, she was very successful in Chicago. And, you know, it's just, just very painful to hear that she died so young. Her mother also died so young as well. So let's continue to pray for the Donaldson family. And a more formal resolution on, that will be, that I'll be having drafted on behalf of the entire commission will be brought forward shortly.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for doing that for us. So sad. I'd like to at this point ask if Ellen Hump Campbell was not a commissioner, but we would like to give a point of privilege for Ellen to speak at this moment.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to say a few words about Bob Ficano's dad, Anthony Ficano. Tony passed recently, age ninety-one. I knew him for over fifty years. Had the pleasure of actually being a teammate with Tony on a bowling team, the Catholic Central Father-Son Bowling Team. Bob and my, our two sons and us and Tony was our fifth. And boy, the guy could really roll it back in the day. But he was a fine gentleman. He was an immigrant with an amazing story, which I won't share now. Installed a work ethic in his son and always made me welcome. And so on behalf of my, my brother Bob Ficano, I just wanted to remember his dad. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Alan. And we did provide a memorial from all commissioners. Commissioner Morecki delivered that for us. And I'll just like to say for Representative Barbara Rose Collins. And I'll just, uh, like to say, uh, for Representative, uh, Barbara Rose Collins, um, we know a lot of us stand on her shoulders from city council to Congress, being the first black woman to be in Congress from the state of Michigan. She was certainly, uh, before her time, but right on time. Um, and she stood for all that was good for the citizens of Detroit and Michigan and the country as her role as U.S. Representative. So we want to certainly give, um, our condolences to her family as we give the condolences to the families of all that are listed here today. Um, we'll keep all of the families in our prayers. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you all. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Public comments? Okay, public comments. Um, does anyone on Zoom or on the telephone who would like to give up the comments? You have, uh, one minute and the clerk will time you. And I will start with, uh, the hand I see is last name is Morelli. Do I see that name? Okay, don't see Morelli anymore. Okay, um, Schultz? Go ahead.
Good afternoon. According to the CDC, children five to fourteen years old have a point-two chance of dying of COVID. Yet, from all deaths, suicide is one point five percent. Homicide is one point, or I'm sorry, homicide is point seven. Cardiovascular disease, point six. Drowning is point five. And the flu and pneumonia are ahead of COVID nineteen deaths at three, or point three. We, as parents and legal guardians of the minor children, do not want vaccine clinics in our schools. Medical decisions need to be left up to us parents and not the government. Unmask our kids and leave our babies alone. I do not co-parent with the government. Stop these mandates and stop driving us into a communist state. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next person, Morelli? Okay, um, I don't see any other hands for Zoom. Uh, help me out, Clerk, if you see hands. Okay, there anyone on the telephone?
Morelli's hands back up.
I'm sorry, I can unmute my phone.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm, at this point, I'm aware no one is going to fight for we, the people, or our children, except we, the people. Despite taking a constitutional oath to do so, I would like to know exactly how long you're going to continue to be complicit in this crime against our children. Senate Bill eighty-two was signed by Whitmer and is law. Whatever she said after saying signing is irrelevant. It doesn't change the fact that you can't mask anyone under eighteen anymore. A million illegals can stroll in our U.S. of A unmasked, untested and unvaccinated. Heck, they can even get cash and a ride to a local city near you. But all of you continue to illegally mask our children for nothing more than I can see but control, because everyone knows kids are the least likely to be super spreaders or even really get sick from COVID. Can any of you tell me why all these unmasked states are doing so much better with COVID counts? Or why three weeks ago for COVID? Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle H?
Thank you. Um, I'm new to these calls, uh, but thank you. I'd remind everybody, all the commissioners that, um, of their duty to keep their, uh, videos on, especially during this comment period. So just putting that out there. Um, again, I agree with the comments stated before. I'm in Livonia and I, uh, in Clarenceville Township. And, um, I don't even have children, but I know that this is, uh, completely unconstitutional. I support all the different comments that everyone else has been stating about the statistics. I mean, it's just ridiculous. I have nephews. They don't live in this area, but, um, the masking just has to stop. And the forced vaccines, I mean, parents are responsible for their children. That's, that's the way all of us were, you know, most of us were, had the privilege of being raised that way. And I think that needs to keep continuing. Um, again, the commissioners need to respect constituents by keeping their videos on. Uh, you guys are technically our employees, so just reminding you about that. Um, and then also, uh, that, you know, that's your job to, uh, stand up for the people. I mean, you took, you guys took oats and, uh, just hope to remind you guys about, about your duties. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
Hi, um, my name's Lisa Ponavis and I'm here speaking on behalf of my daughter. Um, I've been fighting for her since beginning of school. She's not been allowed in school. You can see she had no surgery. They will still not let her in school. She's in special education and needs to be in there. Um, they will not send her homework home. We had a meeting and she, you know, she said, okay, you won't let me in school. But can I please have my homework so I can graduate on time? They would not answer, but then I was sent an email from the special education director telling us, no, that she gets hard copies of her homework if she's in school. This is getting ridiculous. I've emailed you guys with no response. Um, I'm sorry, um, Terry, I don't know your last name, I'm sorry. She responded, but nobody else has responded. The school just keeps fighting us. I understand there's a mask mandate. What about the students? She has a medical note that says she is exempt. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Okay, your name for the record, please?
I don't have to give my name according to Open Meeting Act.
Please, you, you have one minute, please, go ahead.
Well, I was looking at your agenda for today. I mean, how disturbing. Government should not be in healthcare. Nowhere in the Constitution is healthcare. Uh, does it state contact tracing? Okay, you got, Wayne County got three and a half million dollars for all this COVID mania, uh, the fear mongering. Oh, you gotta, uh, wear a mask and suffocate your children in school. Uh, where is Wayne County Commission, uh, even protecting the constitutional right to breathe? That does not have to be in the Constitution. So constitutional attorney Catherine Henry stated, oh, that was not a minute either. That wasn't a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on the telephone? Uh, Sherry? Sherry from Livonia, you're next. Sherry, you having a problem with your sound? Okay, I'll see if there's another hand.
I'm sorry, I couldn't find my unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I just asked, what is the goal of Michigan's? Michigan's constant control and the masking of our children and any COVID mandates because it's not public health. Other states and countries are and have been fully open. Our children are not at risk, except for the emotional cost this totalitarian government is doing to the people. I just really encourage you to search yourselves. Have the courage to stand up against others in your committees and government for harming our children and harming this beautiful nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments today? Anyone on the telephone?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
My concern is this. I'm applaud that the federal government, our politicians are not addressing some real issues. People are actually dying from this so-called shot that they're giving to people. Please address it. Please investigate and research, because this is real. And this, and forty-one thousand people after they got their shot came down with COVID. Address that for me, please. I know you're gonna ignore it, but please try to address it with your good conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. Next for public comments? Anyone on the telephone or on Zoom? Christina?
Hi, I'm, um, I live in Westland. I have concerns with, um, the, just even the, the thought that I would be required to give my fourteen-year-old children who are, you know, they, they're in puberty, puberty. It's a very dangerous time when it comes to, um, putting things into their bodies, you know, into their bloodstreams. Um, so I'm very concerned that at any time I could be required to give them the vaccine. Um, I believe that there has been a strong fight, um, to, to squash, um, any vaccine adverse reactions. So I would like if, if that ever became a, a possibility that, that really be researched before it comes out of your commission. Um, and additionally, I want oh, I'm sorry, additionally, the, the landlords, if they're required to not evict after, um, uh, if someone had applied, I'm just wanted to know if there is a time limit for the application consideration process. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll address the e-Rap program after public comments. Chris Rosen?
Yes, uh, thank you for your time today. Um, so I, I, I would like to first say, uh, I appreciate, um, the unprecedented position that, uh, you guys are in and having to try and make these calls. Uh, I mean, I know for a fact that, um, you know, differences between school districts such as Triumph Academy and Riverview, you can kind of see wearing masks does help. However, the problem is, is, you know, the laws that were signed, uh, and what's going on with, you know, Whitmer, you have to follow the law. Uh, I, I don't know what else to tell you. And if, we can go back and forth on data and statistics all day long, but you have to follow the law. Just hand it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Shawna?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to ask that all commissioners keep their videos on during the entire meeting. The Zoom platform is not an excuse to hide from the public. So we would ask you to keep them on not only during your own time, but during public comment. The other thing I would like to say is that it is wrong. And we would like to know the reason why you are cutting the public comments down to one minute. And now it looks like you're even cutting it less. So please address these, address them publicly and keep your videos on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cindy's iPad?
Am I on?
Yes.
I just wanted to, um, agree with everyone who has spoken. Um, except for Chris, I disagree. Masks do not work and they don't help. And it's been proven over and over, even through OSHA. I worked at Ford Motor Company for many years and I understand how masks work. What you're doing is wrong. It's illegal. It's unconstitutional. And somebody needs to be doing some kind of studies on these masks to prove that they work. But I don't see any money, um, or where there's money in your, um, here in your, um, list to address that issue. And I would like to know if air quality and mask studies are, um, on the agenda and that you are gonna research this in a very quick manner.
Thank you. Next hand, I don't see any more hands. Anyone else on the telephone? There's a hand, Galaxy J seven star?
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
Hi, yes. I just wanted to note that I agree with everyone and their comments. Cloth and surgical masks do not protect anyone from aerosolized viruses. It's completely unrealistic to expect children to wear PPE properly. You know, my kids, they missed two weeks of school because of confirmed case of COVID. They got sick negative. Not COVID, just a little cold. More proof that masks and PCR tests are not reliable. You know, there are zero studies on this long-term masking, eight to ten hours a day, and how it can affect our self, our health. You have to ask yourself why? I, as a parent, have a right to ask questions whether or not this is harming my kid's health. I have two autistic kids. You cannot believe what I've been through. Please listen to people. You know, that's all I really got to say. You know, in your heart, this isn't right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom or on the telephone? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, do you have any emails to read into the record?
I didn't know how to, I unmuted. Know how to put your hand up.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Uh, Kamala? Kamala? I'm sorry, who was just speaking?
Kamala here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great, I'm, all right, so let me just introduce myself. I am Kamala, uh, from the League of Indian Nations of North America. Um, one of the things I wanted to address is the timeframe with which you allow people to speak. I believe the, um, open, uh, public act is that three minutes or a hundred eighty seconds, then we're being muted way too soon. I also would like to find out how and when, actually, is the, um, commission going to be open again to the public, how soon? And also how would I go about getting the, um, the, uh, the plaque, as it were, for the county of Wayne, which designates two governments holding hands, one of which is an Indian. You see the two feathers on your, um, on your seals. So we're being omitted and I want to find out how we need to go about getting in contact with the commission as a whole. Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I'll address that after all the public comments are done. Um, okay, Madam Clerk, if you can read what you have in emails? Absolutely. The first is from Paula Mendelson. FDA.gov website states, surgical masks do not protect against small droplets admitted through coughs or sneezes or when one talks because of the loose bit around the base. They are only meant to protect against large splatters during certain procedures. Yet here we are still putting cloth masks that do nothing on our children. In regards to COVID nineteen vaccines, they can absolutely not be considered safe because there is zero long-term studies done at this time. Only time will tell if they are safe or not. According to the numbers on CDC's VARS, the vaccines absolutely are not safe. The amount of deaths, bell pauses, middle chondros, heart inflammation, embolism is frightening. We've gone from two weeks to two years. We've gone from wear a mask and stay safe, get your vaccine, this will go away. Get a booster vaccine, now will go away. It will go away when we make it go away. Next is greetings, Board of Commissioners. Today I would like to ask you a few questions related to COVID nineteen and the response in Wayne County. With a majority of groups of people nearing a hundred percent survival rate, why are mask and vaccine mandates still being enforced and upheld by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners? Based on common sense, numerous scientific studies and the actions of other countries around the world reveal that the mask and vaccines are not eradicating the virus and are in fact causing people further damage. As a legislative body in Wayne County, it is your duty to stand against these irrational mandates. I urge you to do all that is in your power to stop masks and jabs for our citizens, especially the innocent children of Wayne County. This is your job, you're so, as a commissioner of this county, to uphold the rights and truths enshrined in the Constitution for every citizen of Wayne County. The mask and vaccine mandates are irrational, but what is worse? That was Darcy Reese. Y'all listen to this? Board of Commissioners, in light of Senate Bill eighty-two, which has now made it illegal for counties to mandate children under eighteen to wear masks at school, and funding will be withheld from counties who do not comply. How is Wayne County's Health Department receiving its funds? At the last commissioners' meeting, Chair Alicia Bell assured us that even though the mask mandate has not been lifted, the At the last Commissioner's meeting, Chair Alicia Bell assured us that even though the mask mandate has not been lifted, the funding continues. I'd like to know how this is possible. It is important that we are informed on how you are continuing to receive your funding even though you are not compliant with the new law. Michelle Reese. Commissioners, thank you. A couple of you who actually turn a listening ear to those you represent. To the rest of you, thank you for showing the public your true character by repeatedly ignoring us and even going as far as turning off your screens during public comments. It makes it really clear that you're not representing those who elect you. We, the people, have consistently expressed what we want. Cease the mandates now. It is unlawful and unconstitutional. It is beyond evil to push any of this on our children essentially without having proper data of the long-term effects. You are each held accountable to the Constitution and in fact, you are each accountable to God for every decision you make sitting in that seat. If that doesn't mean anything to you, then you are truly have forgotten your place. I look forward to the next election. Samantha Sorwick. This is from Britta Andries. Commissioner Al Hades, please hear me. I am from your district and I represent a number of your people. Please encourage your colleagues to be present in this meeting. Having screens off is not present and paying attention. We, the people, have kept track of who is and isn't listening, as well as who is hiding. You work for us. Commissioners, my name is Shawna Young in District U. During public comments last meeting, you were asked to explain our funding loss by not conforming to Senate Bill eighty-two with regards to Wayne County Health, which was refusing to lift school mask mandates. You emphatically declared that you had not lost funding. We know the mask mandate has not been lifted in our schools. So would you please explain how Wayne County is able to circumvent state law and get funding? Please unmask our kids. We need to see social cues. Plus, it's clearly not working. Maybe it worked. Hello, Commissioners. With the majority of people under the age of sixty years old having almost one hundred percent survivability rate for the COVID-19 virus prior to any medical intervention, all the actions of this commission in the name of safety in response to this virus are completely irrational. It's actually shameful to witness the way some of you behave as our elected officials making false accusations and twisting the words of the constituents who have been elected to serve. The Associated Press just released an article highlighting states who have above-average vaccination rates that are still experiencing COVID-19 outbreaks. The COVID-19 injection does not stop the spread of COVID-19 viruses. Do some research. Look at Israel, one of the most highly vaccinated countries in the world right now, and also one of the thickest countries. When does the madness end? How many boosters will be enough? The madness can and must end, and now by you passing legislation to stop the mandates in our county. Dr. Leah Riley. Good morning, Commissioners. I am concerned about the funding for our local health department.
Pam, hold on one second, please. Cindy, turn your camera off. Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Pam.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I am concerned about the funding for our local health department as they seem to persist in mandating masks for our children regardless of the new legislation, Senate Bill eighty-two, which went into effect October first, twenty twenty-one. How are they continuing to receive state funding while breaking state law? What is this commission's actions plan to bring accountability to our county? As our legislative body in Wayne County, your constituents, including myself, have petitioned you for months to stop the gross overstepping of our local health department into personal health decisions that belong to parents. All mandates for both masks and vaccines must end immediately, and you must do everything within your power to stop them. These mandates are abusive, illogical, display ignorance, and contempt for we, the people. Kate Riley. Your Commissioners, I am greatly concerned about all the news reports in the past couple of weeks of pro athletes and referees dropping dead after getting the COVID-19 shot. Most from heart failure. It breaks my heart to see these young and healthy men and women who have almost one hundred percent survivability rate from the COVID-19 virus dying early and unnecessarily because they choose or were coerced into taking an experimental injection. These mandates are madness, and the madness must end destroying our young people, and I shudder to think of what it is doing to our most precious children. That was Cindy Stimmelwitz. Next is good morning, I am reaching out regarding good morning, I am reaching out regarding the CMS vaccine mandate which is about to cripple our healthcare system in state. As a healthcare worker who is currently suspended and awaiting justice for a denied religious accommodation request, this issue hits too close to home. I am a single mother of two boys and I worked my way through pharmacy school while they were elementary and upper elementary school. This vaccine is not a vaccine and is against all the immunology and biology I study in my undergrad and then doctorate program. Aside from this, it's also against many religious beliefs. The slaughter of our healthcare workers who stood by dying COVID patients in the spring of twenty twenty, all the way up to now, is reprehensible. The paying nurses more than doctors' salaries to cover the shortages and then use taxpayer money to cover the cost. Again, reprehensible. Now that I have that was Melissa Ari. Dear Wayne County Commissioners, I am concerned about these mandates, specifically children's mask-wearing all day at school. I have included some information you may or may not be aware of. There are several websites listed. I hope and pray for your benefit. Nothing happens to any Wayne County child due to your insistence on this or we lean practice without evidence to the safety and efficacy. I have read our Michigan Constitution and portions are being violated by demanding this action even without studies. It is common sense that substantial adverse psychological and physiological effects can occur with face coverings, including increased acidity, toxicity, toxicity, activation of fear and stress response, rise in stress hormones, fatigue, headaches, a decline in cognitive performance, predisposition for viral and infectious illnesses. That was from sorry, it's pretty long. Cynthia Waballas. Next. Good morning, Wayne County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chris Miller. I'm requesting clarification surrounding the new Senate Bill eighty-two, which was recently signed into law. According to the bill, the penalty in going against the bill is loss of state funding. Our local communities will be negatively affected by the loss of essential services provided by Wayne County Health Department should they be defunded. What is the commission's response possible to do in light of any funding? Hello, Wayne County Commissioners. Thank you for your service. I am writing to remind you that you are elected officials elected to do the work of the people. We, the people, plan that these mandates stop immediately. We have bodily autonomy given to us by our Creator, not by government of any kind. Government is created to protect our freedoms, not to remove them. You are a citizen of these United States just as we are. Please stop these mandates for vaccines and mask-wearing as your constituents have asked you to do for many weeks now. Sincerely, one of your concerned constituents, Joy Polkiewinski. This is Chris Kush. With the survival percentage of COVID being around ninety-nine point seven percent, almost also, uh, also, most people have had exposure to COVID and some still have antibodies. There is no rational reason behind vaccine mandates, especially given recent data showing the vaccine doesn't last as long as they thought, which further proves the newness and unknown information about the vaccine. Respectfully, Chris Kush. Good morning, Commissioners. Even though Zoom has been a tool whereby constituents can have access to commission meetings, I think it's time that we, the people, also have the opportunity to physically attend and be able to make our comments face-to-face. It's been quite disturbing to see that Chair Bell seems to be the only commission member who is visible and listening during public comments. All the other commissioners quickly disappear from the Zoom screen. This is not acceptable. According to the Open Meetings Act fifteen point two six three, under Meeting Section Three, all meetings of a public body shall be open to the public and should be held in a place available to the general public. All persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting except as otherwise provided in this act. The exception is for closed sessions. It also states all decisions of a public body shall be made at a public meeting open to the public. I think it's time the commission hold meetings in place available to the general public. Thank you, Diana Sorwick. The next comment is from Shirley Martin. According to Channel Four News, the latest CDC data shows Michigan has the most COVID cases in the nation. Surprisingly, the number of daily COVID cases, hospitalizations, and deaths in Michigan are nearly the same as they were a year ago. To stop the spread last year, most businesses were totally shut down. Students couldn't attend school, families couldn't be together, and masks were required of everyone. However, we were told it was the vaccine that was going to end COVID-19. A year later, three vaccines have been developed, seventy percent of Michigan has been vaccinated and mask mandates are in place. So why are the COVID cases about the same as last year? Apparently masks don't work and vaccinated people get COVID and spread COVID. Your opinions about this virus and vaccine are just your misinformed opinions. Stop trying to intimidate people into getting a vaccine and wearing a mask. It is our God-given right to make these medical decisions for our own bodies. Shirley Martin. This is from Daniela Canto. I am appalled that so many people have acted by fear instead of facts and data. The mask mandates on these children are first and foremost illegal. What you are doing is criminal, and yes, you're you are complicit by not standing up for these children. The Bears Report has over eighteen thousand people killed by these biological injections, and you are still supporting these injections for kids. With all the short-term results of deaths on adults and teens, why would you even be complicit to this mass inoculations with no long-term studies on side effects for children? We have had seventy-nine professional athletes die of heart attacks since vaccinated. Are you listening? Are you seeing the data that is not skewed by the people who are making money from the injections? Are you not hearing? Again, that was Daniela Canto. Good morning. Please take the time to read my comment. Cloth and surgical masks do not protect anyone from aerosol viruses. It is completely unrealistic to expect children to wear PPE properly. My kids just missed two weeks of school because they were exposed to a confirmed case of COVID. They got sick negative, not COVID, just a little cold. More proof that ma- mask and PCR tests are not reliable. There are also studies on this long-term masking eight to ten hours a day and how it can affect our health. You need to ask yourself why. As a parent, I have a right to question whether or not this is harming my kids' health wearing a mask every day. I honestly, honestly believe the masking is more Jeremy than it would be if we were wearing them, weren't wearing them. This is wrong. And the mandates, let parents decide to mask or vaccinate. Please end the senseless quarantine that deprives our children of their education. We must follow the science. That was from April Weeby. This is from Tamara Olivero. Considering today's appointment of Mr. Phillips to D-Wind despite having any background in mental health, I highly encourage he, the executive branch, and the commission take a very hard look at the mental health situation in schools, and more importantly, take action because the youth mental health crisis isn't coming, it is already here. The following is happening in schools because of the pandemic and the related mandates around it. One, kids not attending schools because of severe anxiety and depression related to the virus. Two, kids having panic attacks in schools because the constant COVID reminders. Three, kids attempting suicide, sadly some succeeding because of the increased isolation disruption and lack of help. Four, kids stuck with their abusers and limited ability for educators to identify common nonverbal cues from kids who we helped due to masks covering half of their faces. Five, increased substance abuse, bullying, violence, screen times, and other unhealthy behaviors kids use to self-treat or vent. If you could care about the future of Wayne County. That was Tamara Olivero. This is from Shannon Seiko. Are you aware of the full extent of the harm the experimental jab is causing? The Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System has recently updated their COVID-19 adverse reaction numbers. The following is a summary of their data. Eight hundred eighteen thousand forty-two adverse events. One hundred twenty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-one doctor visits, eighty-three thousand four hundred and twelve hospitalizations, ninety-two thousand seventeen urgent care, twenty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-nine disabled, ten thousand one hundred and seventy-nine Bell's pauses, ten thousand three hundred and four mitochondrial, eight thousand four hundred and eight heart attacks, two thousand six hundred and thirty-one miscarriages, seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty-eight deaths. Does this seem like a safe vaccination to you? Add in the vaccine has been found to not be effective in stopping COVID-19 to begin with. People that have had the double jab still catch COVID-19. Now they are pushing that this shot in the schools to our children in hopes that it will increase. That was from Shannon Seiko. That was the last one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading those. I appreciate that. Um, at this time, I'd like to go to remarks by members. And under remarks by members, let me ask, um, my remark is going to be ask our counsel, Felicia Johnson, to address the time limit on public comments. I think it's important that the truth is said. Counsel?
Good morning, through the chair. So the Open Meetings Act allows public bodies such as the Wayne County Commission to determine its rules related to public comments. Um, that includes the length of public comments. So if you look at the Open Meetings Act, MCL one five point two six three says that a person must be permitted to address a meeting of a public body under the rules established and recorded by that body. The courts have determined that those rules include the time limit for public comments. The statute itself does not specify the length of time for public comments. So the statute gives that discretion to the public body. This commission has established rules. Um, your rules of procedure, Rule Three, does address public comments and does give discretion to the chairperson to determine those, the length of time for those public comments. And that is consistent with the statute, and we are in full compliance.
Thank you so much, Counselor. Uh, let me also say that state law provides that public bodies can have option to meet virtually until the end of the year, at which time, if they do not change the law, um, we will be meeting in person come January at five hundred Griswold, which is our regular meeting place. And, uh, let me also say that the eWrap program is on the website, WayneCounty.com. You can find out more information about the rental assistance there on that website. Thank you so much. That concludes my public comments. Commissioner Hades?
Thank you, Madam the Chair. I, uh, like to see if, uh, our counsel, uh, Ms. Johnson, uh, could explain a little bit to the public on the commission as power or authority over mandate mask or vaccine. Because I see there, uh, misunderstanding in some area. Lot of people think we have the power to overrule the Health Department or A lot of people think we have the power to overrule the health department or the state. So I want to make sure they understand what's the commission's authority and power in that area. Thank you.
Through the chair, again, this is Attorney Johnson. So under the Michigan Public Health Code, it is the public health officer who determines public health orders, who issues public health orders, including the current mask mandates that's on the books for Wayne County. The public health officer is a department or division within the Department of Health and Human Services, which is under the executive branch. I mean, it's not under the legislative branch. So it is the executive branch through the public health officer who issues those mask mandates. Under the law, the legislative body, this Wayne County Commission, has no authority to approve or to reject any health order. So you actually have no role in that process. Now, it has been said that because you are the commission of the legislative branch, somehow you have a role, and people have cited in the past to other communities or other counties. It should be noted that there are 83 counties in Michigan. Four have county executives. So in 79 counties, the health department would directly report to the legislative branch. That is not the case here in Wayne County because we have a county executive. So the health department does not report directly up to the legislative branch. This body has no role under the law with regards to the issuance and determination of mandates with regards to public health issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We've said that before, but I'm glad you said it again, so that people who didn't hear it before can now hear it again. Commissioner Hades, where you?
Yeah, thank you. It's well explained. I want the public to know where we at on that issue. It's a tough issue, as you see, we all believe. And I want to make sure the constituents of all the county, the all the 43 community, understand our role in that area. So Attorney Johnson, explain it well, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Moretti.
No, I don't have anything. Oh, sorry. I don't know why my hand is raised. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to announce that we'll have our Wayne County Commission Youth Council meeting tonight at 6 o'clock for any commissioners that would like to attend. As well as next month, in December, we'll have our holiday luncheon. This will be the first formal meeting for the youth at the DIA. And commissioners are welcome to attend the luncheon so that they can meet their youth members. And we'll have as a special guest speaker next month, Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib at the DIA. This month, our guest speaker will be Coleman Young, the council member-elect for the Detroit City Council. So again, if you are available tonight, we have our meeting at 6 o'clock. And then next month will be the first meeting for the youth council, an actual meeting, that is, at the DIA. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you can send us a note about the luncheon email, that's all, Commissioner. That would be great. Any other remarks by members? Any other remarks by members? Okay, hearing no remarks by members. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Be blessed with your families and enjoy your families during this holiday season. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just to note, we reconsiderations. We didn't do that.
I'm sorry. Any reconsiderations? No, there are none. Okay. And now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
I'm here. I know.